We've got four here.
We have our first presenter.
Kate, we would like to welcome you to the joint meeting with the Orem City Council and the Provo City Council. Thank you for coming over today. We appreciate that. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, Provo City Council, where it'll also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room, they get noises of paper and other rustling objects. Further, be aware that microphones can pick up side conversations. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind those in attendance that although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise directed. And Cliff Stracken has volunteered to give an opening prayer. Oh, before we do that, Cliff, let's begin with a roll call.
Cliff Stracken.
Jamie Davidson.
Scotty Miller.
Debbie Luray, Orem City.
David Harding, Provo City Council.
Mark Zeestrand, Orem City.
Amanda Erkenrath, Provo City Recorder.
Gary Winerton.
Richard Bruns, Mayor of Orem.
George Handley, Provo City Council.
Dave Knack, Provo City Council.
Oh, and Kay Van Buren is excused. And George? Yeah. Don't know. I just know that Kay hinted the way. Kay won't be there. Okay. Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity we have in a free country to govern ourselves. We're grateful for these elected officials and their staffs who work so hard and tirelessly to support and serve the cities of Provo and Orem. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet together and talk about issues of common interest and to counsel one with another about the important things that we do and that we might better serve our communities. We give thanks, Father, for those that we serve. We appreciate the input of our residents and our businesses and may we do our best to serve them in return in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you, Cliff. I do not see Janelle. Mark, do you? Cliff, you know? I don't see her either, but Dan Gonzalez is here. No? Yeah, Dan is here. We can move on to item number two. We'll come back to the UTA discussion in a minute. Dan, are you ready to go for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna come now, not...
I am too. Thanks for the flexibility.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone. I'm Dan Gonzalez, here with the Provo City Development Agency, administering both CBD and home programs. The reason why I wanted to talk to you, and I should say, Steve from Orem, who is participating administering CBD funds for Orem's here as well, we were hoping to have Michelle Carroll and Jessica DeLora, who administered the CBD County program, but one is sick and they will have a doctor appointment, so neither one of them could be here. So, you're all very aware, and let me know if this is not the case, of what CBD is, the Community Development Law Grant Program. We use these funds as a grant that we receive from HUD that allows the grantees to assist with community development and non-community development needs for those, for those grantees, sorry. So, in Utah County, there are four entities that receive CBD: Provo, Orem, Utah County, and Lehigh. Although Lehigh is, we have included them in our coordination here, Lehigh is, I think, is the third year that we'll be receiving funding, and so their allotment is, the allocation is very small, it's about $250,000 to $250,000. And they particularly use that funding for infrastructure programs. The reason why we're here is because with CBD, up to 15%, oh, hang on, that's not, that comes later, with CBD funding, we can assist public service organizations when they have capital projects. And this is something we have done on and off. As an example, House of Hope requested funding from Orem, from Provo, and from the county to upgrade the six bungalows or cottages that they use for the residents in the program. And with applying for all three different programs, they have to meet, it's the same requirements, but for three different entities. So, they have to make three applications. There are three different committees that approve it or evaluate the application. They have three contracts, and then environmental, Davis Bacon, all of that, they have to respond to all three entities for the same thing. And then with reporting and monitoring is also the three entities. So, in the last couple of years, as we have been attending conferences with HUD Denver, which is the field office that our representatives reside, they have been encouraging us to do a more coordinated approach for these type of projects. First, to ease the burden on the agencies, so that they only have to deal with one thing rather than three at the same time, and duplicate, avoiding duplicating the process for the agencies and for the organizations. Because if all three, in the example that I just mentioned with House of Hope, all three of us have to prepare environmental reviews for the same project, and then all three of us have to do evaluations of Davis Bacon and other things, and it's just duplicative, it's burdensome. In some areas, we could say it's wasteful, because again, we're doing the same thing more than once. So, in following with HUD's recommendation of coordinating these type of projects, where we can streamline and simplify the process for applicant agencies to receive this assistance, the first thing that we did was first talk to them and see were they interested, all these agencies, and then follow up with needs that they foresee for the next five years. And so, we sent a survey and received a survey from them for, it's about, I don't know, 15 different agencies that responded with different needs for the next five years. Now, the idea here again is to assist the agencies with those needs, but simplify the process for both them and us. As you know, typically, our process is a competitive process, where we put out a notice of funding availability and put out applications, and then the agencies come back and tell us this is what we would like to use this funding for. With this process, we're flipping, at least for this portion of public facilities rehabilitation or upgrade for these type of agencies, into a more proactive way, rather than responding to what they want, is looking at what it is that they need, and then on this end, the grantees, looking at what can be done, and then streamline the process proactively. So, rather than having them submit applications for what it is that they need, we would look at it, at all those different projects or proposals, and see how they can be accommodated within the next year or two or so. We would look at it in an annual basis as well, because there may be some things that came up.
So, Dan, let me ask you the question then. Are you saying you will go out and look for projects, rather than have them come to you, or you will go find them?
Right. We will respond from the survey that we got from them, as to what their needs are. We will evaluate those. That will be the process. So, yeah, we kind of go find them, but it's from the needs that they are reporting to us that they have.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense? For example, let's see. Well, the first one here, ability first. Say that for the year 2020, they have two projects, a building improvement and a building acquisition. They would request $80,000, or they anticipate that the one project would be about $80,000, the second project would be about $100,000, right? And they state that they are a year of 2020, is what they are expecting to do this. Another example, let's see, Ra, Realization and Developmentation Services, I guess that's what it is. For 2019, they anticipate doing energy efficiency updates for doors, windows, wall panels installation. That project they anticipate would be about $75,000. Then they have another four projects, and three projects in 2020, building security, updating electric and plumbing, and landscaping. All of that, for a total of about $95,000. And there's, there are others like that. So, looking at what their needs are, we would, the proposal is that rather than each entity trying to respond to what the application would be, is we get together, these grantees, CBD grantees, look at those proposals, and see how we can ease the burden of the process and satisfy their requests.
If I could, I mean, that example, and how things are done now, what they would likely do is say, "Provo, will you do the doors? Orem, will you do the windows? Utah County, will you do the HVAC and electric upgrades?" They would break it into three projects, and that means, to Dan's point, three environmental reviews, three applications, three monitoring, because it's separate organizations. But what we're discussing is, hey, let's pool our money together upfront, and let's get that same project done with one funding agreement, and ease the burden on these organizations that they exist to serve these people. They're not federal grant administrators. This is, this usually stretches them in a lot of ways, and we want to make it easier for them, serve the same purpose, same amount of money, and just save everybody time, frankly.
Right. Question?
Yes.
So, you've got these surveys, which become the replacement for the application, so to speak, that you anticipate rather than respond. How then do you work in a project or a group that isn't on the radar, hasn't been funded on a regular basis, and just is the new kid on the block?
Like, we'll still all hold our regular process, competitive process, noticing a funding availability, and so they will be able to get it that way.
And then once they get established, they'll maybe fit in with the rest, and maybe get their projects pre-approved or looked at on a larger basis?
Yes. And we have somebody that is, that is looking to apply, and it's not in this group of, what was it, 26 or 27 agencies, was what we reached out to. We only got back 16 or 17 to us, but we reached out to about 26 or 27 agencies. But yes, there would be an avenue for them to still tell us what it is that they're looking for.
So, if there's an agency that has a presence here in Provo and Orem that doesn't impact Lehigh, how does that, like, does Lehigh still have to participate at some set ratio, or is that kind of negotiated project by project?
That's a good point. We do have to, even though we have the ability to go outside of our confines, we do have to justify the use of those funds, which would be by reporting beneficiaries from that entity that are being served. So, if there are no Lehigh residents, then Lehigh would not be able to participate in that part of the funding.
So, essentially, it's done, not even agency by agency, but project by project?
Yeah, project by project. And one of the things, although this is very rough, we did ask them, what's the percentage of citizens from these different entities that come to your agency? And, you know, that uses an idea to see how much, what the ability is for each grantee to be able to participate with the funding there. Yes.
It seemed like a couple of years ago that the women's shelter did not do their paperwork the way you wanted it, and so they did not get funded that year?
They did not submit an application. It's not that they didn't submit something and we didn't accept it, it's just they just didn't get the thing applied. But this is part of, another reason to avoid those types of problems. Besides doing this, we're also coordinating so that the programs have similar dates, similar documentation, so that it's easier for the organizations to...
So, are they getting funded now, women's shelter?
They submitted applications, yes. They are receiving funding for this current year for Provo. I assume that Orem is...
No, I know about Orem, I was going to go.
Steve, how many of the organizations that come to Orem are, would cross over to Provo? We, we...
Yeah, we, Jessica, who unfortunately is, and she has the number, because she coordinated with all agencies to see the crossover, but, I mean, there, it's more than a few. There's quite a few that are receiving it from each of us.
And I did make a mistake in mentioning the 15%. I do want to point out, we are not talking about that 15% here. We're talking about capital projects, which is the 85% of the funding that can be used. We're not talking about 15%. Just, just to be clear on that. Meaning that there are organizations that are still looking for that 15%, that's still, that's still going to be known. I'm going to talk to you about that, but I wanted to make it a little separate here.
And it could be the same organizations, but it's not a capital project?
It could be. Yes.
I think part of the impetus to this too, these organizations, and they've expressed this to us, is it isn't easy to go raise money for capital projects. It's a lot easier for them to raise it for, hey, we want to give treatment to, you know, 30 underprivileged children. That, that's a lot easier fundraising for them than, hey, we need a new HVAC for our building. But they can't do the service without the, without the capital. And so, we're trying to meet the needs, and to Dan's point, these, these organizations, they serve us regional. So, while it may be located in Provo, Orem residents are using it in a similar way. And so, we want to see this beyond the borders of our cities, as these are regional needs, they want to be addressed with regional money, and HUD wants to see it that way as well. They want to see us coordinate better to eliminate a lot of this time and energy, but also hopefully be able to coordinate better on the bid process and save money for these organizations as they bid out projects. Yes.
And what I mentioned, the dollar amounts here, they are giving us dollar amounts for what they anticipate the project will be, that doesn't mean that this project is 100% funded with CBD. At least I know that county and Provo do require some type of match from other kind of funding, so that it's, it's not funded completely with CBD funds.
So, this will make it better on the government end of things, because you're operating, and, you know, instead of applying three different times and guessing or hoping who's going to fund us for how much on each of these different cities, it's coordinated, and it's, it sounds like a better process. But how does it work for the entity that is getting the money? They have to still track the recipients or their customers, where they live, and who they're serving, and then report back either individually to each city or to the group as a whole, saying that so many of our clients were from the area, targeted area. So, are they going to report it back together with one, one report, or individually to each city?
So, there are a lot of details that we haven't gotten into, because first, we wanted to see that councils are in agreement, that this is a direction that they would like to see things. But we are looking at those types of things, that, those details that we're willing to...
And the reason I bring it up is every city would like to think they're getting their money's worth, that their client, their citizens are being served with what they contributed.
Sure.
And I will say, Dan, Dan mentioned this, in the survey, they've already reported those numbers. So, in the survey, we did ask what percentage are Provo, what percentage are Orem. So, they have those numbers, and exactly who they'll report them to, we do need to kind of pass through. But, but we, we won't be allowed to fund any greater than the percentage of our citizens that are receiving the services. So, that cap will be put in place, so that every city will have comfort that we're not overfunding for Orem's, you know, residents. It will be capped on what they're allowed to do.
Yes.
And this might fall into something that still needs to be figured out, but if one community benefits more than the other, but this community is willing to fund it to a greater extent than this one, how do we, how do we, does it have to be proportional to how it benefits each city, or can each city kind of decide unilaterally, this is how much money we're willing to contribute out of our bucket?
It's part of what we're talking about. We have, we are responsible to tell HUD how are we, a reasoning of why so much money is funding this project, based on who is, who it's serving. So, based on those ratios. So, your example is, would beneficiaries, a city that is, that doesn't have as many beneficiaries is contributing more, that wouldn't be the case, because we have to be able to justify the amount based on beneficiaries.
So, it would be driven more by who benefits in each community and less so on, this community wants to fund it heavily and this community doesn't?
Correct.
It has to be proportional.
It seems that there, I mean, this, this is a harder number, I'm sure, to measure, but there's also the cost of not spending that money, right? That is a, is a risk.
Correct.
Because of the potential damage that it does to the citizens who would otherwise have those services who suddenly don't, and then the impact on the cities seems to be a pretty serious consideration in the, in the cost. I guess all I'm saying is, I'm a little less nervous about an exact accounting of customers per dollar, when I'm also considering the fact that these are money, this is money that's spent in saving situations from being a lot worse and a lot more costly across the board.
Yes, that makes sense.
If I, if I could, because that's a good point. We, even in our discussions, we've had to keep in mind that there's these two separate pots. There's the, there's the 15% that goes to the services, that goes to giving the counseling, the therapy, the healthcare, whatever those are. This pot isn't that pot. That, those services will continue to be funded with the 15%. This pot is, is those capital needs. So, we're not taking any money out of the services to the children, or whoever it might be, to fund an HVAC system. This is a separate pot of money that we're all giving, we're just giving little bits here, little bits there, and all separately. We're going to bring that and coordinate it together. And it won't touch the money that is going to go to the services that are essential, which we completely agree with.
Well, but you're also saying, right, that if we, if we were, if they didn't have these funds at all, and they were unable to upgrade their buildings, they're going to have to...
And they cannot provide the services.
They're going to have to start pulling resources from somewhere. So...
Okay.
I see it as a win-win, I guess. So, we're lose-lose.
So, the main change, I just want to summarize, that we'll be working proactively ahead of time and together to determine what's going to be funded and how much. But helping with the funding, in the past, here we are separating the 85 and the 15%. In the past, when they needed a capital improvement project, did they come in and ask for it out of the 15% or we already were funding them out of 85?
No, it's already funded from capital projects. Yes. Typically, that's how it is.
Dan, go ahead.
I just wanted to summarize and add one more thing. Do they have questions specifically from us, or do you want to...
Yeah, I do. I know that we've used some of the CBD funding for a park.
Right.
And that's capital, right? That would be...
Right.
And how is a park in Provo benefiting Lehigh?
Right. This, that would not be the case.
We could not use CBD funds for a park then?
For Provo, you would not, we would not be combining for the whole group for that type of project. If this is only specific to...
We don't have to approve the whole 85%?
No, no, no.
Okay, that's what I didn't...
No, and each grantee will still have, maybe not the whole 85, but a portion of that that will be used for parks or infrastructure or whatever needs specific to the grantee.
So, it's only to do, to help us consolidate the processes where everybody's going to benefit? We all have our own money?
Yes.
And, oh, this project will benefit them, we don't have to do three, okay, I'm getting that. I'm understanding that.
Yeah, because we had that conversation, because there's things that we need to continue to fund for Orem City. We're not going to touch that. There's just a portion that we already give or are giving that we're going to bring...
It was that example with House of Hope. We contributed with $42,000. Orem contributed with...
Seven, I think.
Seven. And the county had another $30,000 or $40,000.
I was a little concerned that I'd have to go to you guys, to Orem and to Lehigh, to get approval to spend money in a park in Provo, and I didn't...
Now, this is only for capital projects or public facilities for agencies that typically provide a public service.
Just to let you know, Orem is open to a new park in Orem. If Provo wanted to fund...
And residents want to...
Maybe our CBD can use it.
So, the second part of that, as we're talking, we're separating, right, this capital projects and was the 15% that can be allocated to public services. That will still be available still from, from every grantee to allocate as they wish. But we would also like to do some coordination on that. Rather than having Orem grant a... Rather than having Orem grant $1,000 to three or four or five different agencies, pick one of those and give them $5,000. And then the county and Provo can look at the other three and, basically the same thing. Rather than all of us doing a little bit to all of them, is focus on just a few that will receive a bigger amount. And when I say just a few, I'm not saying that we're eliminating people. We're just saying those that typically come to all three, we will look at those and see if there's a possibility to allocate, because it's very, very demanding for somebody that is receiving $1,000 and have to do all the requirements, when they're also receiving from us, say, $10,000. And we could do $11,000, and then they don't have to go and do that one. It's easier for them just to do this. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Again, we're not eliminating people that are receiving public services, we're just trying to make it simple since. And then, if we were funding somebody that was receiving $5,000 and Orem can also serve, help them with $5,000, then, because they're pulling those $1,000, I don't know if that makes sense, hope I'm not confusing you, but we're trying to make it more simple, streamlined for agencies and for us as well.
And this is being encouraged by HUD, right?
Yes.
So, as long as you do it their way, it sounds like it's a win-win.
We hope so.
And we've been in close coordination with the number two person out of the HUD office in Denver. And this is new, I think this is something that's coming down from, every new administration looks at HUD completely different. It started with the new administration saying, let's eliminate the whole program, to let's give the program 10% more than they gave it last year. How that worked, I don't know, but I hope they propose eliminating it again if it gets us another 10%.
And be able to report it this way, we can showcase some of the projects, which is one of the things that the Denver office is looking for. So, to give more credence to the program and hopefully have less people saying, let's do away with it.
And they're hand-in-hand with us, however, some of these details that we still do need to work out, they're working with us, so whatever comes of this, will have their blessing, because they're kind of by our side through this entire process. They want to see this happen.
So, Dan, you bring up something that's important on a local level, but it's very important on the national level. The reason why there was a push to defund the programs in the first place, because of certain cities, certain entities, either not using the money wisely, or that was the perception, and it's like, well, if we can't get a good value out of this, and if people are abusing the system, then, you know, they start to defund it. So, you've got to make the case that the money is being used effectively and properly. Certainly, we appreciate it, and I think we use it responsibly, even if some of the other entities in the country haven't. But if you're looking for positive stories to highlight, then this is a good way to do that.
That's our hope for that.
Thank you. Dan, appreciate that.
So, the update is that Janelle Robinson apparently thought the meeting started at 1:30, so she's on her way, another 15 or 20 minutes. The last two items on your agenda, we intended to be a little bit free-flowing, but if you wanted to choose one of these...
So, let's move on to item number three, and when Janelle come in, we're gonna cut it off and have a discussion. Dave, you?
I was just curious, did we give them the information?
Dan?
Yes.
Question?
Did you get the information or the feedback you wanted from us?
Yeah, the thing was that, yes, we're back to that, right? Yeah, I think the one thing that, where you'll see this is, for example, Mayor Brunson, this year, Orem may not show Center for Women and Children in Crisis on our funding. And it's not because we're not funding that, we've just coordinated, and Provo may be taking that, that one, we may be taking a different one, so we just have...
So, can you show us that though?
Yes, of course, of course. Yeah, we just, we don't want the messaging, of course, to be the, the city of Orem cut funding from some organization, or the Provo did, it's just that we've coordinated, they're getting the amount of money they wanted, it's just from one entity.
So, just as an example, when you bring, you know, here's the proposed allocations that we have for these different programs and projects, would you just have one, one item that shows, is this kind of like a shared pool with these communities? Would it be possible to also just have a list of here are the applicant, even if we don't have the amounts, but here are the programs that apply to that pool, so that we have some kind of way to show this isn't just some black hole that the money is in too?
Yeah, we could share those kind of survey results and...
Yeah?
Great, thanks.
Okay, item number three, discussion on tax increment financing. Dave, was it you the one that introduced it? Well, yeah, was this your item that you wanted to talk about?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
Thanks.
Can we pull up the screen? So, thank you. There's been some discussion on tax increment financing and, like ULCT and some other places. And just kind of conceptually, I wanted to go over tax improvement financing and when at least I see it as a very effective tool, and how it could go out of control, I would say. So, imagine you have a city, and there's a part of the city, there's a commercial hub over here, and it is the hot place to be. It is great. Lots of people go there to do their shopping, there's a few kind of draws, and everyone benefits, you know, every business that's nearby benefits because there's a lot of foot traffic, people are out doing that, or, you know, shopping anyway. And maybe there's another area that at one point was great, but it's kind of tired, it's run down a little bit, it's starting to attract some criminal activity or whatever, so it's, you know, it's just, it's not a place that a lot of people enjoy going. And then say, there's, say there's a new company, a company that's decided it wants to locate in the city, and people are excited about it, it's gonna be a draw, and they might look and say, okay, where do we want to locate? And they think, well, if we locate here, we're gonna benefit from all of the synergy that's already there. Or we could locate here, and our sales may not be as high. So, from their point of view, you know, maybe they could get a little bit cheaper, you know, rent there or whatever, but, you know, there's an advantage for being here. From the city's point of view, though, they might think that, hey, this company's big enough, they're gonna be drawing their own people. If we could, if they would locate here, then, you know, that might help turn this area around, it might help these other property owners to reinvest, and we might be able to pick up, you know, bring up the property tax revenue from this area. We might be able to, with more people there, we won't have to spend as much time on law enforcement and money and effort there. So, there's a benefit to the city, the community, if they were to locate here. So, to me, that's a time when tax increment financing is a wonderful tool, because you can, you can make it worth their while, I mean, it's in capitalism and in free country, they can choose where they want to locate, but if you can incentivize them to go there, then they're happy because we made it worth their while, and we're happy because it can help turn this area around. So, to me, that's an example of when tax increment financing is a great tool. Imagine now, sorry, I'm partly deaf, so I don't know, anyway. So, zoom out, this is no longer a city, this is now a whole county, and it's made up of lots of different cities. And a new, you know, a national brand is expanding. And they've decided, okay, you know, the next step in our plan, we are going to locate in this market, because we're kind of a regional draw, we're gonna bring people in from throughout the county, and so it makes sense to have one store in this county. Well, the way that Utah does our sales tax formulas and whatnot, it's an advantage, you know, there's gonna be a financial advantage to whichever city gets selected. And obviously, you know, some places have different characteristics and whatnot, and there, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages, maybe certain types of places of retailers will go to different areas, but generally, you know, it kind of is market-driven, and they go wherever makes the most sense. And whichever city gets that, gets the financial benefit from it. You can imagine that they'll do a site selection survey, and they say, you know, here, and here, and here are our top three places. And maybe there's really not much difference between them, but for the cities themselves, whichever one they select, it makes a big deal. And so now, city A says, well, hey, if you'll choose us, you know, we'll share some of the, some of it for you, which is some of the, some of the financial windfall, we'll rebate some of your sales tax. And then, you know, if city A is the only one that does that, then it makes a lot of sense for that company, you know, if they were thinking about it anyways, it makes a lot of sense. They can save a lot of money on taxes if they go to city A. And if you look at kind of a TIF advantage, you know, if nobody offers TIF, then everyone's kind of on a playing field. But if, if one city offers it, now every other city is slightly disadvantaged, and that one really has an advantage. But you can imagine next year, a new national retailer is coming in and wants to join in, and now city B here, and C, they say, oh, boy, we lost out on that one, we're not gonna let that happen again. And so now, all three of them are offering that. And so now, A's advantage is lost.
Why is it lost, Dave? I don't understand that.
Meaning...
Because the others had the opportunity to get in.
I should probably draw this lower, but where before, kind of A was kind of a no-brainer, because they were offering something that no one else was offering. But now A, B, and C are all offering, and so the TIF no longer is an advantage to A in comparison to B and C, because they're all offering it. You know, if Macy's is offering $50 off, you know, purchases of $60 or more, boy, I'm going to Macy's. But if Macy's and Fresh Market and Smith's all offer the same deal, well, which one do I go to? You know, it's not as much of a draw for one. But the likelihood that they're going to D, E, or F is kind of a disadvantage. You know, they're less likely to go to something that isn't. If, you know, and so then, next year, D and E also offer it, and so now, there's really, TIF is no longer a strong advantage for any of those cities, but the likelihood that someone's gonna go to city F, you know, because, because they have all these other options that are gonna refund them their sales tax.
So, as a former economic development director, retail tips are not where you want to be, generally speaking, unless you're gonna revitalize, because there's not the right job component. And the job components, these are not high-paying jobs. So, unless you revitalize an area, you wouldn't do, you wouldn't be doing these projects. Retail projects are not great tax increment, they're just not. They don't have the job creation, they don't. I mean, we, when I used to do them, they had to be at least above the median of the county. So, like I said, unless you revitalize an area, I wouldn't even bother with this retail stuff. You wouldn't even waste your time, because you're right, you're just competing, and the jobs are not what you want. So, you gotta look at projects that are not low-income, minimum wage jobs, you gotta look at the technology jobs. That's where you want, that's where it makes sense, because your job creation is what you're trying to create. So, like I said, this kind of stuff, retail, county doesn't want to fund it. They told me, don't bring us any retail projects, unless it's a major thing, like maybe the mall, and small little, like a Target here or there, it's not a great project. And you're right, it doesn't make sense on the sales tax. It doesn't make sense on the job creation, doesn't make sense on the sales, because then it pits one city against the other, and no one wins. So, you're right in that argument, but I wouldn't even bother with having these retail projects. They just don't make sense financially.
That's, and I thank you for sharing that, because, because at least, I don't feel like that's necessarily what I've been hearing. But of course, it's usually from the people asking for money. At the ULCT conference, we had a, we had a whole forum, and every one of the experts up there were, and it was just, it wasn't even like, should you do it? It was just, this is how it's done, and just over and over, this is how it's done.
If you miss the job component, job creation component, it's wasted your time.
But from a, from a different perspective, if these are the rules of the game, then everybody plays by the rules of the game. So, if you don't like the rules, you gotta change the rules.
Right.
And I think you're gonna run into resistance by saying, let's all come together, let's determine a rule, a series of rules, that is going to essentially level the playing field. The reality is, there'll be other tools and other things that will be put in place to work around. There always is.
And fair enough, and fair enough, and I don't have, I'm not, this is not a presentation, even though it kind of sounds like it, this is not a presentation where I've got a conclusion and I'm trying to convince everyone of. I want to have this conversation.
I mean, I think part of, if I may too, I think part of the challenge is, we're not aligned as a state, as it relates to economic development, incentives, how we strategically all benefit. You know, we have, and I know you have, on many occasions too, had conversations with the state of Utah, and the expectation is, hey, we need your help to do this and this and this. And then we look at it and say, these kind of benefits for the state are going to tax our infrastructure, they're not gonna lead to the jobs that we're looking for. In fact, they, to some degree, are gonna require higher levels of service than other types of projects and opportunities, yet the expectation is that we're gonna participate. And there's a disconnection. And so, from my perspective at least, if we're gonna have a conversation about economic development, it needs to be one where the state is at the table saying, okay, we're gonna try and align all of our interests together so that we all benefit, but that hasn't happened.
Yeah. And maybe, maybe if, I mean, if Provo and Orem lead out with a discussion, just a conversation, and if we could bring all of Utah County to, I mean, we're probably not, you know, signing up, here's the details of a plan, cooperation plan or whatever, but at least, okay, we can see that these things are in our interest, and we say, okay, we now, we need the state to be a part of this. You know, maybe at that point, we've got enough political heft that we can bring the state to the table and have a conversation about that.
And that doesn't change the fact that, for example, in North County, there are thousands of, you know, thousands of acres of greenfield that is infinitely cheaper to develop than what we have here in Orem, what we have here in Provo. It's really more challenging than, because you always hear that, well, we're just, you're just zoning for dollars, which is a ridiculous concept. It's easy to say that, but if you look at it, it's, we're operating at a significant disadvantage, as urban centers already trying to maintain what we have is intimately more difficult, or infinitely more difficult than what is happening in some other places here in the county and in the state.
Okay, just finish up on this.
Dave, we're gonna have to hurry.
Oh, okay. Okay, just, the last thought was, if everyone offers it, really, there's no advantage across the board. I mean, if they're going in somewhere, everyone's offering the same incentives, it's no longer an incentive to go from to one city or another, basically, well, except that some can offer more than others, and it's a race to the bottom. And really, all it does is, is it kind of undercuts this method, this mechanism that we, for generations, have used to fund our public services, is by having businesses contribute in the communities they're in, and we're undercutting that. And so, I think, I think we can have a conversation, because I think this is a self-defeating practice, and it's something that the industry knows that they can do and kind of pit us, pit ourselves against each other, as David said earlier. So, I'd love to have this conversation over the next couple of years or whatever, as...
I think Jamie's right, though, it's gotta be more of Orem talking about it, it is a state problem, I think.
I agree, but I think if it's something that we care about, I think it's something that we can get the ball rolling on.
Okay, thank you. We have Janelle Robinson here, and we're grateful that you're here for with us. If you wouldn't mind, go ahead and...
Yeah. So, sorry, we got the times confused. Mary and Steve, Mary Delmarciello, the regional manager here, and Steve Meyer, the interim CEO of BTA, really wanted to be here. I told them the wrong time, I'm sorry. So, they won't be able to make it, but we just wanted to give you kind of an update of where we are on the Provo-Orem BRT project. We don't have a ton of detail right now... We don't have a ton of detail right now, but we've been moving it forward. People are asking the question, we said we were going to be open on August 13th because we signed new pass programs with each of the universities, BYU and UVU, and just kind of wondering, okay, it doesn't look like you're done with construction. So, and you're right, we are not done with construction. But we will be upholding the agreement with the universities to provide an enhanced bus service in the meantime, while we're finishing construction. What that's essentially going to look like is, we are going to use the new UVX branded buses. We will be stopping at the current local route stations on the side of the road. There's a lot of work to finish on the centers with the stations and the platforms. So they're going to be utilizing the local bus stops, wherever there's a center one, where there's a nearby local one that will be on the side of the road. So that's what we'll start with. We're kind of phasing this in as we go along. So anywhere there is the center lanes, you've probably seen the buses out there. They are out there training right now on how to use those center lanes, because once we put the buses in service, we don't have the drivers to train. They'll be working. So before August 13th, we do need to get all the drivers trained on the center lanes. So they are utilizing the center lanes out there with traffic control out there. Come August 13th, we'll switch that to the outside. They'll be running at the local bus route stops along the corridor. There's adjoining stops. And we'll get a lot of signage out there for patrons so that they'll know they can catch the bus. The bus service will be a six-minute headway, so it is going to start out really, really frequent and kind of provide that enhanced service. Contractor will switch then to start working on all of the center work. So at that point, the center will be freed up. There won't be buses training in it. They can do all the work that needs to be done in the center of it. Right now, with the way the schedule is looking, it's looking like University Parkway will get finished up first. And we can phase that one in hopefully by October. We're trying. We're really struggling right now to commit to date, so you know, don't hold me to it by October. We're hoping University Parkway will be done. We can jump those buses at least back into the center, utilize the center stations and lanes at that point. And then shortly after, we can do University Avenue. 700 North should be ready on August 13th. They're going to set the canopy on that station this weekend. So barring any major design flaws with any of that, we will be using the lanes on 700 North and the center station at 700 North. They are working really, really hard to get the platforms that are on the side at 700 North BYU, the MTC and Stadium Station, and the Utah Valley University Station. So that at least by school opening, those platforms will hopefully be open. We've got a lot of electrical work to do and lighting and those kinds of things. So it's just going to kind of determine when we can get those final touches on those canopies and stations.
So the platforms, do they have heated piping, the long cement?
The ones that are in the center of the road, you've probably seen that if you've been out there, that there's a system of black pipes. Yeah, it's a glycol system that will be able to melt the snow off of those platforms, controlled remotely by UTA. It's just at the center stations, because it was hard to get snow removal equipment out to the center of the road. So the side stations will be cleared by the adjoining property owners.
So has that added to the time?
Um, we thought that was going to, and that actually went a lot easier than we thought. We've had, you've probably heard a lot about the issues everybody's having with construction right now. There aren't enough workers. Everybody's getting pulled in a bunch of directions. The tech corridor has taken a lot of our utility subconsultants away temporarily while they go work on those. It's delayed us some. So we've kind of had the typical delays that you would expect on a project. We found a lot of utilities that weren't where we thought they were in University Avenue. It's an old street. So we've spent a lot of time reworking a lot of utilities so that we can widen the road there. So we're not as far along as we would have liked to be, but it is nine months earlier than we had originally planned. It was April of 2019 that we had originally planned to be open. And that's actually our commitment to the Federal Transit Administration. We wanted to get it done earlier just to catch those students the first of their semester. But we are going to be running an enhanced service and phasing it in as things get completed. But really, safety is our top priority, so we don't want anybody out there trying to use those stations while we have, you know, canopies trying to be set or electrical work trying to be done and that kind of thing. So we want to try to keep those two things separate and confuse our patrons the least we can.
So we're talking three weeks away. What are we doing for the grand opening? How are we combining with Provo and Orem and with UTA and UDOT? What is the program? Is there a program?
So we haven't decided on a date yet. The contractor really wants to set the first couple canopies to see how they're going to go.
But I mean, if you're opening up on the 13th, are you not going to have an opening then, or are you just?
No, I think we're really going to do a kind of a soft opening and just, you know, start running the additional service and get some information out to students and people in the community that they can start using.
So you're thinking a grand opening when everything's done?
Yeah, we're thinking that we will push that back probably till the October, November timeframe, when there's something that's more kind of.
But you will be putting out to the public and the paper and social media, the 13th buses start?
Yep.
And maybe say this is a soft opening?
Yeah, yeah. And we're going to need to put a lot of information out there, so we're making sure that people aren't trying to use the center platforms and that they know where to find the local route stops in the meantime. Yeah, so we're working on a PR campaign to kind of make sure everybody's not confused. And then to have a grand, grand opening once construction is more fully complete.
Okay.
Could you explain again what the enhanced service would be then? So you're going to have a few stations opened as if they were the full-blown bus rapid transit model, but then all the others are just going to be normal bus route stops, but more frequent?
Yeah, it'll be a lot more frequent. Our current service is a 15-minute, on a 15-minute headway. We'll have the six-minute headway during the peak hours, so we'll be running additional service. We'll be using the new buses. People can bring their bikes on the inside and all of that. So it'll be kind of, we're kind of phasing it in. And then as we, as parts become available, then we'll start utilizing all of those parts as they are available to be used.
Janelle, as the students get here, I don't look forward to Education Week and students getting here. That's going to be, what are the possibilities? I know we're begging for contractors. Is it budget constraints that would keep us from doing that work more at night? Or is it the noise? Is it a possibility to do at night when there is not so many people around?
So, yeah, so they have a lot of night work planned over the next few weeks. They're milling and repaving all of University Parkway. All of that work's going to be done at night. We are doing a lot of, we're not, all the canopies will be set at least after 6:00 PM, so that we're not interfering with daytime traffic. There is a lot of night work in the plans. You're just worrying about the traffic diversion?
Yeah, I like, you know, that's it. We get so many tra, it's such a mess during Education Week and the beginning of school especially. If some of those things could be, then we're adding construction to that.
Right, right.
And I was wondering about getting some of the construction when less people are traveling.
Yeah, yeah. They are planning on doing, like I said, a lot of that major work at nighttime. Over the next few weeks, while we're doing training in the center of the road, they're going to try to clean up a lot of the side stuff that's kind of causing some traffic confusion in the latest right now. And then they'll be working in the center of the road after that, once they start running the bus service, and hopefully not having to divert traffic as much as they have been. They have cleaned it up quite a bit over the last five days, basically, compared to what it was. So I'll take note of trying to do as much of that work as we can at night and other times.
Could you explain the map for us a little bit? What's the difference between the green dots and the blue buses?
This is just the project map. The green dots were where we're making intersection improvements on the project.
Thank you.
Signage and education. I found myself yesterday in a bus lane trying to make a left-hand turn. Oh my gosh, I can't do this.
You're one of those people!
I was one of those people yesterday. How do we, what's the easiest way to get that, that's, I just blew it.
Yeah, so we are, we're doing a few things. We're trying to get bus-only painted in all lanes. The problem is, we are immediately going to mill them off. So we, so anywhere that there's black paving that we needed to mill off, they did put the bus-only signs in there. But they will be putting bus-only painted on the pavement so that it will be hopefully a little bit clearer as we get all of the permanent striping down. We've kind of been working with the police city to city as well to try to get some more enforcement out there too. Now, when they're seeing people do things that are illegally, that, you know, they need to, it needs to be brought to their attention versus.
So watch out.
Yeah.
Can I have a warning first, please?
Yeah, I'm sure.
You need to start talking about the bus.
That's right. And just so you know, I only have, I've only received one call today that, see, I told you, nobody's riding those buses.
Nobody is riding those buses. It's a driver.
Only one call, so.
I was all day yesterday.
We need to put some dummies in the bus.
That's right. No, that's exactly what they're suspecting.
Yeah.
That does concern me, and I mean, I understand the need for the enhanced service, but I'm a little worried that the enhanced service between, say, August and November, we're going to have buses going every six minutes, and they're not as likely to be used as heavily as they will be once this thing. I mean, I know there's got to be an interim period where people get used to it and so on, but what concerns me about just providing that enhanced service without, I mean, I'd almost, I guess my question is, is it mainly because of your agreement with UVU and BYU that you feel obligated to do that? Because it might, it seems like it makes some sense to just say, business as usual until we're actually totally ready.
Yeah. We discussed potentially running less of a headway so that there wouldn't be quite as many buses on the road, and maybe it wouldn't seem as though there were as many empty buses. We're, but we're working out, we're working out issues. I don't know, Reed, do you want to talk about how drivers bid their work? So we've had all the drivers bid to work as if the service was going to be in place.
So we bid our work, so we have the drivers committed. And then when we talked about it, we talked about all those options. And really, what it boiled down to is, we made some commitments. We made some commitments to the universities. Back when we're talking to BYU and UVU, we thought we would be further along than we are. We said, we're going to open on the 13th. We'll run a really good service. We may not have all the platforms done. But for the start of your school year, we will open a really enhanced, nice service for the students so that they can leave their cars home and they can use transit and start to build that ridership. We felt because we made those commitments, we really needed to open. We didn't want to have a grand opening and say, look what we built, and not be able to look at what we built, right? And so, the staged opening is our way of honoring our commitments. We will still provide a really, really nice service. Isn't what we hoped for, for day one, but as we bring amenities online and the center stations online, and we're going to do really good wayfinding, specialized signs at the stations, information about each station posted there about how to ride the system. And so, we're going to have what we feel is going to be a really nice service. It just won't be serving the center platforms. So the timing of that is challenging to work out, because obviously, it's going to take a lot longer to run in the shared lanes. So we're working all of that on the backend. But what the customer should see is about every six minutes peak, 10 minutes off peak, a bus is going to come and pick them up. And that's going to be a really, really nice service for our customers. That was our thinking.
I would just say, with a lot of the students and their families planning their semester, their transportation around that expectation that this was going to be ready, I like the idea of keeping it as close to that expected experience as possible so that they don't recall and think, oh, I guess I do need to buy a car here at college, because I, you know, I can't wait 15 minutes for the bus to come by and things like that. So I think it's a good step.
We're trying to, we're pushing really, really hard. We want this to go quickly right into, you know, utilizing those center lanes.
You know, one thing I was going to say, I think certainly we, hopefully, can all understand the pressures of construction in our state right now and what you're faced with, what the airport's faced with, what SR92 is faced with. So I feel like you're doing a good job, and hopefully, we can get through this and finish up here as soon as possible.
It's going to be really, really nice. If you've seen some of the landscaping that they've been building there.
Trees look good, up and down University Avenue. I liked seeing them today. And I liked seeing the landscaping on University Parkway.
You see all the canopies and the shop going together. They look really nice. The columns are looking really nice, the benches. Got art on every single glass panel on those, so it's going to look really, really nice.
And our Provo downtown ink, it's done, I don't know if it, but you guys have done it on, but our downtown ink has been very involved in that. Tell me about a vote that was taken to potentially give this opportunity to everybody to ride it for free in the beginning. Did that happen?
So maybe I could mention something there. The vote was taken a month ago on putting that on a priority list of projects that MAG is funding through different funding capabilities. And the actual funding portion of it, we will vote on a week from today in regional planning. And I was back with Jamie back in Washington DC, and we were talking with Senator Hatch and with Senator Lee and Congressman Curtis. And Congressman Curtis and Senator Hatch are both going to write letters of support for what the CMAC is. And I don't know if you know what the CMAC is, but it's congestion mitigation, and it's also traffic congestion. I'm sorry, air pollution reduction. And those funds are specifically for that purpose. So that money would go for three years and would allow free ridership for anybody at any time. And we have found that when you have free ridership, your ridership doubles. And so this would be a great kickoff. But I can tell you that the congressional delegation in Washington is watching this. And they're very much in support, stating that this is exactly what this money was passed for. This is what this money should be used for, and this is an appropriate project. So, yes.
So, three years free ridership. So those three years, the universities will or won't be paying?
Pardon me?
The universities also have a contract?
No, the universities, I believe, will be paying a million dollars a year, each of them. And they'll be paying during this time. This is for the residents, not the students.
Right.
And so this is a specific group. And at the end of three years, we'll see if we want to continue, if CMAC money is there. But again, this money is actually set aside for traffic, reduction of traffic congestion and reduction of air pollution. And this project fits exactly what that is.
And what you're talking about is just for UVX, whereas the universities? That's the whole UTA system, right?
I'm curious, going back to the question of the opening, if there's not going to be a major opening then until October, November, I mean, what would you hope or want us to do in terms of public information, public awareness?
You'll be giving us releases, right?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we have a lot of, our PR team is working all the time with Steven and whoever else to get information out there. We have some pieces we're putting together that talk about how and where people are going to arrive and that kind of thing. It really helps when the cities help push those out through their social media and other things that we've had. But I know the PR team is working on a plan and is coordinating closely with the cities.
Janelle, thank you for coming down. This is very helpful and gives us information to let us know what we can pass on here.
Sorry, Steve and Mary weren't here. They felt bad that I gave them wrong information.
Now, you know what, one thing that we ought to do is, they meet monthly. Now, you know what, one thing that we ought to do is, they meet monthly.
Uh-huh.
And anybody that has any interest in that, they still meet monthly. I think it's the third Wednesday of every month. And they meet in the top of Designs, uh, not Designs, the Wells Fargo Building. And those are, they give you updates. They fill you in quite well on what's going on in the next few weeks. So I'm sure that everybody's...
You're talking about the Community Advisory Committee?
Yeah. And you're, and I, it's, it's, it's an interesting meeting to attend to keep you updated, so.
Mary would love to meet with anybody who would like to be briefed or would like to have a meeting. She would absolutely love to do that. I can commit to that on her part. So feel free to call her if you have questions or would like a tour or whatever we can do. She would be more than happy to assist with that.
What time does it start on the 13th? Is it gonna be 6:00 AM or is it gonna be afternoon?
Four o'clock in the morning.
Four o'clock in the morning. Okay, cool.
Truly a soft opening.
All I, yeah. I'll see if I can, like, lead us there. Well, we're thorough outlet. Hey, I'm gonna be writing this on the inaugural day, you know, at this time and just see if I can...
Do you have a card I can give you of your Mac schedule? We'll be ready on that first day.
Probably not a lot of visibility at 4:00 AM, no.
Well, actually going north, a little later than that. So it won't be the inaugural ride, I bet, it'll be the inaugural day.
Thank you very much for coming. We'll move on to the last item here quickly. A discussion on the City of Orham's moratorium on high-density housing. I don't know, Mayor, Jamie, I don't know if either of you wanna, I don't know who asked that, talk about this, but...
I'm, I'm happy to say a few words and maybe have Jamie say something. And you don't know who asked for it?
Cliff, how did this get put on? Is this just something that we talked about? Just a little curious?
I think we're a little curious, but I thought somebody from Orham had, had put it on the agenda. If I could be wrong on that.
Let's blame David Spencer.
So maybe I could just say a couple of things. The City of Orham put a moratorium on not high-density housing, but changing commercial zones to high-density zones, uh, along the major thoroughfares, meaning the University Parkway, Center Street, 8th North, um, and State Street. We did that in February of 2014. Uh, when, uh, some of us were elected, we looked at what was occurring and felt like zones were being changed. We wanted to slow that down until we had a chance to do a State Street master study. And so we did that. Um, that has kept, uh, I think, kind of a control over, uh, changing of zones along those thoroughfares and has slowed down some of the things going on there. Now, we're not against, uh, high-density housing along those areas. Actually, we're in favor of it. But we wanted to control what we're doing until we do the master stu-, uh, study on State Streets. So we just, uh, voted as a council on the City Center Hub, one of five, uh, on the master plan for State Street. And in that, we have now allowed, uh, mixed-use high-density housing within that hub so that moratorium no longer applies to that 4th Street, uh, or 4 block North and South and 4 block East and West section. And, uh, the idea has been to try to control and to govern what we're doing and to watch over what we're doing. Um, we are, uh, trying to work with the city as far as where high-density goes. Um, we've had four projects that I know of at least that, uh, the city has considered for high-density in and amongst neighborhoods that we've turned down. Um, high-density is needed in many areas. Uh, but this is meant more to be a control and to govern. And so, like I said, it's still in place except for the City Center Hub and we are considering to vote on other hubs here in the near future, so.
So, um, I appreciate the fact that you want to only do things that are properly thought out and planned ahead of time rather than just, I guess...
Trying to.
Otherwise, you just open it up to market forces and it happens really nearly.
Right.
And could you summarize, um, I mean, you're a college town also.
Yes.
Sometimes I say that Provo's a two-college town.
Could be, yes.
And, and they did do, uh, like for the BRT, a study with, I think, over 5,000 UVU students that called Provo home for various reasons. And actually, that made a great case for why we need BRT in the first place. But, um, typically, college towns are very challenged nationally with trying to have any semblance of normal life, normal neighborhoods.
What's that? I'm sorry, I gotta ask, what's a normal life in normal neighborhoods? There's where I get to...
Well, go to, go to the other college towns and ask them. But I'm just saying that it's, college towns, um, I went to a national conference in DC for land use and they had one whole session just for college towns.
Sure.
Because they have unique issues. And they deal with them in different ways. And, and Provo is unique, not just 'cause it has the, the two-college-town factor, but we don't struggle in the same ways that other college towns do because our, uh, students in both Provo and Orham are much better behaved. And so, we don't have rules about frat houses. It can only be like one per block or one per mile or whatever they do in other places to try to control what they're dealing with. So we are dealing with something different. And, um, so how do you look at neighborhoods in, in your city? You have done a pretty good job, in my opinion, of protecting, uh, normal neighborhoods. Uh, and not just because the neighborhoods are activists and NIMBY and don't know something.
Right, so, I mean, we have, uh, we are not set up in districts as Provo is. But we do have neighborhood plans and we have neighborhoods, and we're set up in neighborhoods with neighborhood names. And we have passed and worked hard on neighborhood plans to protect those neighborhoods. And I think that has been very beneficial.
When you say protect...
Protect the neighborhoods from a lot of outside forces, high-density housing, deterioration, uh, in those areas.
Do you consider owner occupancy an issue where you have, if, if the neighborhood's 80% investor-owned, is that a problem?
I think so. Uh, and so I think those are areas we're working on. One, one area that you're probably aware of is our student housing with UVU. And we, as a city council, passed rezoning that, um, to, uh, allow that to become a student housing. And we've had a referendum against that. Uh, that was, the vote was to take place in 19. We have voted as a city council, had to take place in 18. Uh, but, uh, on the ballot, it will read that it is a vote on whether or not to allow a student housing village, uh, adjacent to UVU. And we have found that a lot of people actually are in favor of that. Uh, where if, the referendum people mostly came out and said, "This is a vote against all future, uh, high-density housing in the City of Orham." So I, you know, I think, and, and it's up to the public. It's a referendum. Public will vote on it and, you know, whatever their decision is. Um, but that particular neighborhood actually approached a developer and wanted to sell their homes with the idea that, you know, that would go into student housing.
If I may, I think one of the things from a... There might be a misconception that we have, as a city, placed a moratorium on high-density development when in fact, it was somewhat of a veiled, uh, effort. We did not impose a moratorium. We actually wrote out of our planned development zone, high-density projects. So traditionally, what we were seeing is developers were not taking advantage of high dens... They would not come in and request high-density zoning. They would come in and request a planned development zone, which would allow them to, based on A-Bridging requirements, allow them to come in and build density. And to the mayor's point, we, we had concern with what was happening was we kind of felt like they were coming, developers were coming in requesting this planned development zone, requesting the flexibility to do certain things that we weren't necessarily comfortable with. And so, we wrote it out of our zone. And recently, based on work we've done along the State Street corridor, we have now kind of strategically inserted it back into our, our zoning by saying, "Yes, you can have this type of density provided you meet the following criteria." Uh, but now, the development community doesn't see it as criteria-based development. They see it as you created a moratorium. The other thing that I think is interesting is we talk about the evolution of Orham and the evolution of Provo. Um, there is, obviously, Provo developed as a university, a college town. Orham didn't. Orham developed as a neighborhood and a community adjacent to a university town. And then it evolved into a university town. So, uh, we are not experiencing the same type of issues that you are, but they're coming. And we're starting to see that. And one of the challenges that we face is the city council, for example, you, I'm sure too, they're not opposed to the density. But those who live in adjacent neighborhoods, for example, around UVU are. So trying to figure out how do we, how do we build and create an opportunity to preserve neighborhoods while at the same time accommodating students in that population that wants to live directly next door to the university? And that is where a lot of the consternation is coming from. The city council made a conscious decision to permit that kind of density directly adjacent to the university.
On-campus drive.
And, and then there were neighborhoods, neighbors who said, "Well, we want, we don't want this." To some degree, it's like what's happening up in Holliday where the city council is consciously making a decision to permit this kind of use. And then thereafter, based on referendum law, they're coming in and saying, "Well, we don't like it, therefore we want to change it." So I think as a community, we're acknowledging the fact that, hey, we are a college town. We are trying, we had a council member a number of years ago who said, "We need to embrace our UVU-ness." And in many respects, we're trying to do that. But there are a good number in our community that are not necessarily sure they want to embrace the university.
I love that. Thank you. It helps us.
Just a question, if there's a, uh, perception that, I mean, one of the things I find curious about the resistance to the idea of being a college town is the assumption that these people are all leaving as soon as they graduate. And that clearly is not the case.
You might be able to say that 15 years ago. It's not the case now, that's for sure.
And so my question is, do you have any information, any data from UVU about that? Do you have any sense? I mean, it just seems to me, I don't know if by virtue of UVU becoming UVU made it more or less likely that people were gonna stay. Do you have any sense?
They do have data on that, yes.
And I, I think it was about 70 to 75%. Don't necessarily say Orham, say Utah Valley at least. So, you know, it could be a neighboring community, but they're not going out of state.
That's a high number, actually.
So a question, uh, we just, uh, we do the neighborhood plans. We did it the southeast neighborhoods three at a time, um, and that is...
And your southeast neighborhood is a very special situation.
Right. And, and so that's recognized, uh, in changes to the southeast plan that called for a new type of housing to, uh, zone property and try to attract developers to provide housing for this demographic that is staying. And that, um, even though we've built 1,500 new units all around, mostly downtown, they don't necessarily want a one-bedroom unit for a thousand dollars a month. Um, one of them wrote back saying, "I don't want anything over 700." And most of them are paying 350 to 5 right now to rent rooms in a house or a condo or a townhome or wherever they can find it. So we don't have enough housing for hardly anybody. We have a dearth of married housing for young marrieds and most of our family housing has turned into something else. So everyone's kind of scrambling to try to find affordable housing. And, and if you define affordable as if the average family, uh, or household can make X dollars and can afford a certain mortgage or rent, do we have things that they can afford to buy or rent in the community? What, and what is that average number? In my neighborhood, on certain streets in Deer Haven and Sike Canyon Drive, that price is about 13, 12, 13 hundred dollars a month. But if you then up it to 1,600 or 2,000, it, it changes who can afford to be there.
Yeah, I think we have a real gap in our communities in Utah and I think that's a real issue. I thought it was interesting when we were in Washington, meeting with the congressional delegation, that is almost like right up there at the top of their radar. I mean, each one of the three said, "That is a major concern and we're hearing from all of our communities." And, you know, you, you've got a gap from when you get out of college or you, you know, you start your career to the home you'd like to live in. It used to be there were starter homes. You could build some equity and move up. But it seems like now there's no starter homes to get your foot in the door to build that equity. And, and that's a real problem. I think that all of us, uh, need to address and it's affecting all cities. And, um, you know, we need to work on the answers.
Last question, would you, how are you, uh, looking at our... There's a request in Provo to change our family definition from a family of, or three singles to four singles. And is that something that you would consider in Orham?
I don't have an answer for that. I haven't studied it enough.
We're watching your view very closely.
I'm aware of what's going on. You know, the, you're addressing really the southeast section and that is such a specialized situation that I don't think anybody's dealt with before, in my opinion.
Well, it, it will affect other neighborhoods because...
No, no, it will, but I'm just saying, that is that clump right now that is...
Yeah.
That is there. And, I mean, it really speaks to, uh, those that, I guess, have not married, those that don't feel that they can afford a home, uh, professionals, young professionals. I've not seen this before, so I don't know how to answer it, to be honest with you.
Right, so anywhere that you could have students living and of course, that's, UVU students can live anywhere in Provo. So it's not just the young single professionals that will be affected by this definition change. Anyone who is, uh, can or is renting to regular students and has a current limit of three because it was approved as family housing would also be able to...
So I would throw the question back to you, not so much what your answer is, but when do you think you have to come up with an answer?
Um, I think when we have enough data to make an intelligent decision.
'Cause I, to me, it's a real problem and I, I don't know what the answer is, but...
Just tied to that, I mean, I think there's, there's a couple of issues. One of, of the new housing and the new construction, but then it is the preservation of existing neighborhoods. And we are, we are seeing that same challenge of illegal duplex apartments. Uh, outside owners that aren't living there, that are putting more than they should in the, in the housing. We're seeing an influx of Airbnb homes that are, that are now becoming part of neighborhoods, especially closer to the university neighborhoods. Uh, how, how do you guys deal with Airbnb rentals and...
Sometimes like this.
Because don't ask hotel. That's where we're at. How do your neighbors feel?
Well, I just, I, I didn't, maybe I should start emailing the Orham City Council. Yeah, put it up. But, um, as the housing chair, I look for articles and I just recently sent out some for, uh, New York, New York City dealing with Airbnbs. And they have 45 members on their city council and they voted 45 to zero to require Airbnb Corporation to give them the names and addresses of all their host, customer, or people that do that. And that's, of course, being flawed because they don't wanna be revealed. And they had, actually, some guy come into their council meeting and said, "Yeah, I'm doing this." And they looked into it and found that he had created an illegal basement apartment, didn't meet code and they hit him up with fines like $30,000. And so he's countersuing and Airbnb is paying his bills. So there's a lot of angst going on in New York City about this.
So there's a lot of angst going on in New York City about this. They claimed that their comptroller said that this is costing the residents of our city $616 million more every year in higher rents because these Airbnbs are driving up the rents of these properties and bringing in outside investors. Boston is doing this, feeling the same pitch and passed a similar law that they exempted one, two, or three family structures if they are owner-occupied from some of the regulations.
I know that the state is working on some of these Airbnb issues again, and so we get to deal with some of the things that they're working with. Yes, we, you're right, we need to have some more conversations.
Maybe we can ask.
We're talking a lot of problems. We've got to start figuring out some answers, and I get that. Your assignment for next week, how do you get the, next month is to get the communities, the neighborhoods and the high-density people together. We'll work on the other thing over here. Come back with an answer, will you?
Our answer will come the first Tuesday in November.
Yeah, that might be, there might have some truth to that. Okay, I thank you. I think our next meeting, we got a date?
I don't know that it's scheduled yet.
Um, council, you'll, we'll, we'll make sure it's taken care of, but we'll have it. Thank you for coming to the, I think this has been a helpful meeting today for me.
Just in time for the rhythm cut. Over.
4:00 AM. We'll do it at 4:00. No, we'll adjourn this meeting, but you can add them. So we said, thank you for coming.